Okay, I'm just gonna quickly summarize. We have just started the meeting. We came back from executive session. No votes were taken in executive session. That is just to recap, public announcement was made regarding the Charahoe Budget Referendum. It will be held here for Hockington residents at the Town Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow night. And right now, I will read the consent agenda again, and then I will allow a motion to be made. So it's we're going to approve the consent agenda. Town Council Meeting Minutes of March 21st, 2022. Approve petitions of National Grid Verizon, New England Incorporated for joint poll locations on High Street, Diamond Hill Road, and Canache Road. Do I have a motion to approve?
Councilman Hurst, I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
All in favor?
I second.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'll make I'll make a I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Up next, we have vacancies and appointments. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to appoint Caleb Grant to the Communications Committee. Is there any discussion?
Councilor Hurst, so moved.
Second.
Council Gary, second. All in favor?
First, aye.
Gary, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Caleb Grant is appointed to the Communications Committee. Up next, number two. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to appoint Etta Zasloff to the Communicate Communications Committee. Is there any discussion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Gary, aye.
Davis, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Etta Zasloff is appointed to the Communications Committee. Up next, under number three. Discuss and consider and possibly vote to appoint Sarah Steverman to the Communications Committee.
Councilor Hurst, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Sarah Steverman is appointed to the Communications Committee. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Ronnie Spazato to the Zoning Board of Review. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I move that we reappoint Ronnie Spazato to the Zoning Board of Review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Davis, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Ronnie Spazato is reappointed to the Zoning Board of Review. Up next, number five. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to appoint Clifford Hale Jr. as the alternate to the Zoning Board of Review.
I make a motion that we appoint him.
A second.
All in favor?
Comment?
Sure.
I'm going to be voting against Mr. Hale. I don't believe he works well with people. In fact, he likes to have his own way. I don't like the way he the lack of respect he showed for the Pottehill Dam Committee. He was appointed, and certainly, he was in a minority on that committee, and he for many toward the end, he missed a lot of meetings, and he blew them off, and I'm going to vote against him. Thank you.
Any other discussion, any other comments?
I would say Clifford Hale did a lot of writing those letters to the residents to make sure that they knew to complete the well surveys. I think he did. He went beyond, so.
You also have to have also have to have ability to work with people and realize you're not the only one that knows something. Thank you.
Okay, well, is there was a a
I propose.
motion. There was a second. All in favor? Scott said no, apparently. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's at the point, I mean, Councilor Hurst could be a harm's end, right? I really don't know him personally, but I'm big enough to put aside that, hey, if he's volunteering to be on a town committee, if that committee has a problem, then that committee can do. But yeah, he's a he's a yes.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Marvel, yes.
I call a no vote.
And Moffett, yes.
Chris, no.
All right, so the yeses have it. Clifford Hale Jr. is reappointed as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Review.
Appointed.
Appointed, okay, but he was already on. So anyway, so number six. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Joseph York to the Zoning Board of Review.
Mr. President, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Gary, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Joseph York is reappointed to the Zoning Board of Review. Up next, number seven. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Matthew LaBounty to the Recreation Commission.
So moved. Councilor Hurst, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
First, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
And and Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Matthew LaBounty is reappointed to the Recreation Commission. Number eight. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Christine Cook to the Recreation Commission.
Councilor Hurst, so moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Gary, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
And Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Christine Cook is reappointed to the Recreation Commission.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say thank you to all the people that sit on our boards, and it, you know, it takes it's it's one of those things. It's again, it's volunteerism. I'd like to thank all the people that came up tonight for reappointment. Thank you.
Free comments. Up next, under new business. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to oppose to oppose proposed legislation HB 6676 relating to taxation dash levy and assessment of local taxes. And here we have Tiana Zartman to give us some information.
Good evening. Let me get it.
Just say your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Tiana Zartman. I'm the tax assessor for Hockington. The proposed legislation is Bill HB 6676. Essentially, it is trying to propose that the land located beneath the solar arrays cannot be reclassified, revalued, or reassessed due to the presence of renewable energy sources. There is an exemption for farmland, but it limits reclassifying farmland to the classification and the tax that predated the farmland classification. In essence, we would be limited to taxing the land under the solar array at $3,000 per acre, and there would be no allowance to change any other value of the land. So I went through each approved projects, solar projects that Hockington has to see what impact it would have on Hockington specifically, and I did it for the 2018 Tax Roll Forward. So 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, and I did the proposed refunds for the Tax Roll 2022 using the estimated tax rate. All in all, it would be around $450,000 just that Hockington would have to refund. That does not include any potential or future investments that Hockington was expecting to get from solar. There are a lot of questions left in regards to the proposed legislation. Farmland can be reclassified, but we have a program called Farm, Forest, and Open Space. It does not address the forestry or the open space. So that, in essence, would have to be continued being valued at the current assessed levels, which forestry is $115 per acre, and open space is generally $2,500 per acre. The current residential per acre is $3,000 per acre, and for solar specifically, once it is approved, we value it at 15,000 per acre. Once they start construction on the project, we value it at 22.5 per acre, and what once it is online and up and running, we value it at $45,000 per acre. So it would be a huge impact to go from essentially $45,000 per acre to $115. If you have any questions, I am available, and I have each parcel information if you would like that information as well, but.
Well, Councilman Hurst, I think it's outrageous because when people were promoting the solar issue, and I voted along with Councilor Davis against most of them, I think she voted against all, and I only voted for one. It was based on it was going to help taxpayers, and this shows you really how dishonest those claims were, or certainly, it wasn't a good faith effort from the way I look at it, and I think most reasonable people would say it wasn't a good faith effort. And I support this, and I want to thank you for the effort, and I appreciate the assessing group in Rhode Island to to do that. But I find interesting, and people who know me, I'm a very politically minded person, but we had the Brushy Brook proposal, which was defeated by the council on a three to two vote, and one of the lawyers was Joe Shikachi, who's the current Speaker of the House. And I look at legislation in front of me introduced by Representative Tavon, Cadillo, and Bella Wilkinson, and these bills don't come out of the thin air. Somebody gets somebody introduce the bill, and I like to I'm really interested in the politics of this. Who got them to introduce the bill in things of that nature? What's going on behind the scenes? Because it's these things don't crop out of the air. I understand that it was introduced last year, but I like to make a motion that the that letter that's in our council packet be sent by the council president, and I make that a motion.
The letter from Sharon? Is that what we were talking about?
No, this part.
Okay.
The one that was in our packet.
Okay.
And I have I agree with Councilor Hurst, and I actually edited that letter very minimally, so I agree that we should send it.
Well, I, if you want to make the motion, I defer to you on that. Okay, I mean, I make a motion that we support the resolution, the letter with the changes proposed by Councilor Davis.
A second too, but are there any further questions from Tiana?
No. I think she did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But I would like to, go ahead.
And I used her her letter as part of a letter to the editor, which she pretty much read again, so that's most of it. And I would like to add that as I stated during one of our recent town budget meetings, the actual revenue collected from solar projects has fallen far short of its goals. Based on an updated solar project list between fiscal year 2017 and fiscal year 2022, we will have collected a small percentage of the projected revenues that were provided as justification for the original projects. The town has already suffered emotionally due to solar projects, and for what? Now, this proposed legislation would reduce our revenue even further. Paying for the refund of already collected taxes and preventing the town from increasing future solar land assessments and taxes would result in millions of dollars in lost revenue over 20 years, and would require an increase in our property tax. Clearly, this was not the rosy picture presented to get these projects authorized. In May 2021, the Hockington Town Council wrote a letter of opposition to similar bills, House Bills 5634 and Senate Bill 0832 relating to taxation of renewable energy, and I also proposed that we edit that letter of opposition to greatly emphasize our horror at this to greatly emphasize our horror at this second attempt to defund our town in favor of outside speculators and developers and send it again to the Rhode Island Legislature. I also urge all Rhode Island towns that have approved solar projects to wake up and also send letters of opposition to the reduction of their income. I wanted to put that in the record.
I would also like to put Tiana's memo that she sent to the council in the public record also.
You want me to add that to the, I'll add that to my motion as she agrees to the second and your stuff. I, I'm just so outraged in, what I'm going to try to do is I'm going to try to fill out the politics behind the scenes because somebody's pushing this. And I don't know if it's the real estate interests or the solar interests, but these things don't just come out of the blue. Somebody is promoting this behind the scenes.
Well, you've got two legislators representing developers that are actually at the legislature that are going to either vote yes or no on this. I mean, that's pretty much where it tells you where it's at.
My biggest fear on this thing is the fact Joe Shikachi is the Speaker of the House, and some people believe the speaker is more powerful than the governor. It's such a powerful office, and he was a lawyer of a failed solar project in Hopkins in the Brushy Brook proposal. So I'm really, really concerned about this passing. So I implore the citizens of Hopkins to contact your representative and even the governor's office so it can be killed. The governor, you can contact him through the internet, your state senator and representative, and please do that. Because I'd like to see this thing killed because it's really bad news for Hopkins and in smaller towns especially. And I think this is one thing that regardless of our disagreements on other things, we need to take a stand for the town because this could be the ruination of, of Hopkins. And we don't know where our school finances are going to go into the future. We got this, and we have a town to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone else have anything else to add before we vote on this motion? Well, we've already had a first and a second. All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Here I.
And Moffett, I. The motion passes. Thank you, Tiana.
Thank you.
All right, up next, under unfinished business, number one, proposed amendments to Chapter 17, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Hopkinton as amended. First, discuss, consider, possibly vote to approve proposed amendments to Division Four Building, Building Numbers and Street Names. Do we have anything else to, anything to add to? Are there any?
As it pertains to the Division Four Building Numbers and Street Names, I believe we were pretty much ready to go on that. There was a minor adjustments that were made to it during the meeting on Friday that Brian had held. So I believe that that one is really clear and ready to go.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Town Council approve proposed amendments to Division Four Building Numbers and Street Names be approved with that small change that the town clerk just mentioned.
I second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Here I.
And Moffett, I. Motion passes. Next up, discuss, consider and possibly vote to approve proposed amendment to add a Division Five to an official street map.
Mr. President, I make a motion that
Hold on one second, Scott.
I just wanted to mention that this one has, is a little more difficult. It involves a street map, but in speaking with building and zoning Sheri, the zoning official today, she mentioned that she and the Public Works Director went through the street list, and both of them agree that it looks good with just one more removal, Bridge Street, because it's a state road. She feels that going forward, it would be good to have a starting point. The map has not been updated to my knowledge. So I don't know if you want to put this into place and subject to the updated map or if you wanted to delay, but that is up to you all.
What's the delay? I mean, I mean, how long is the delay?
I think it takes some time to update it with our current GIS system. So it could probably be probably a couple of weeks, I would think. Yet it's, my understanding, very hard programmed work.
Sure, sure, I can imagine.
We've made probably a handful, if not more, of divisions at the last meeting. So we would have to give it probably a couple of weeks.
So who pushes to a state, a day certain?
Yeah, or you could do it.
No, I think we should see what.
Council Marvel has a comment.
I just wanted to point out that the map itself and the list of private roads is always going to change. It's going to be
Yes, of course.
Kind of an ongoing thing. So perhaps what we should do is in the ordinance that doesn't change, we just reference that as a separate document or separate sets of documents that will change and will be updated. But we don't have to have those changes specifically in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Because it is, I think we discussed having a annual or every, you know, every two years having a review of the list because, yeah, there is always going to be changing additions.
I mean, it's a living document, really.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, it's, I make a motion that this be tabled to, over to the second meeting.
Table it, do we?
No.
According to what?
No.
So based on what Council Marvel just said, you have a suggestion as to a wording or a phrasing, or is it important to put some sort of phrasing in there under 17-147, maybe? We did change that a little bit where it stated the following list of roadway recognized.
So perhaps that can can say instead of it starting with the following list of roadways, it could say the list of roadways recognized as non-town maintained private roadways will be maintained
I got some.
And available.
Council Gary wants to add something. Thanks.
I'm definitely on board with Counselor Bob. Maybe we could put it down as is one of these documents that gets reviewed once a year by annual by a council. Because nobody else, somebody might always suddenly, hey, I'm going to build a road off this. And like Bob is saying, it's continuously, it's a revolving document, something we see every year.
So maybe we don't have to add any of it. But this is the council's document at this point, so up to you.
Makes sense. Anything that's going to change to not be in the, so you have to rewrite the ordinance every time, right?
It's not going to hurt us to wait a, wait a while to vote on it either. Did they ever rectify, I'm, I'm sitting here about the thing, there was a question whether you could build a house on a road, or there was some type of question of a plotted road? Was that ever finally decided?
Yeah, I think you had written this in memo. Or you had, you had said this in either or something.
Right, well done.
What was it called?
Purpose of that section is to address what you call a stub road or a paper street.
Yeah.
So, you know, at some point, somebody could create a development where they say, you know, here, this ends in a cul-de-sac today. You know, we put on the map the plan for how it might extend into the future for future development. But it also might come to pass someday that that paper street never is constructed.
So it's only for paper streets?
Right, so it would be if someone, you know, at some point wanted to develop something that, you know, would be on what was marked as a street on the, on the plan, and there's a process to.
Hey, I thank you.
Did you have anything?
I don't really have anything new to add, but I'd like to thank the Town Council for considering this. It's been ongoing for quite a while. Town manager, police commission, especially Sheri DeJardine. She's really done the lion's share on that. My input has really only been the need for it. And I thank the chiefs from the, the Hope Valley Fire Department and the Ashway Fire Department and the ambulance corps as well. There's a real need for this, for the, the numbers. It was a collective effort for everybody involved here. And once we realized we needed this change in the numbers, then we realized we needed the map change. I had nothing to do with that, so kudos to everybody that was involved in it. So I appreciate you taking this, this on.
So, I mean,
As far as 17147, what if we put something like the list of private roads and sections of roads in town can be found on the official town? You know, we come up with a name for that, official town map that can be found in town hall or on the town website.
Yeah.
You know, that way we're referencing this, you know, this live document.
I think that wording change would simplify this and make this something that we could, we could pass. So we'll change the wording and then we'll take a vote on it right now? Yeah, that'd be good with that. Yeah, no, I think it's, I think.
So after the word Hopkinton, you're going to say can be found? It's the following is a list of roadways recognized as non-town maintained private road, roadways in the town of Hopkinton and can be found on wherever you want to put it.
Copy of the, you know, Hopkinton Town Hall and/or listed on the town's website. Sounds good to you? Good to me.
At the town hall or on the town.
Come up with, like the official town or just for reference.
Official street map?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what it could be called.
Right, just so that if there's multiple maps out there or revisions, it's not used. There's one official, one that's referenced. So we can, you know, you guys could even, that specific map when it's available. That way, that's the one that's coined the official.
Right. So you want to read what you think we said?
Repeat, section 147?
Yeah.
The following is a list of roadways recognized as non-town maintained private roadways in the town of Hopkinton. Official town of Hopkinton street map can be found at the Hopkinton Town Hall and/or posted on the town Hopkinton website.
The official?
So you started with the following is a
Yes.
Yeah, that was up there.
You just say the following list or say the list of
Well, they've got words. They've got list of all the
Yeah, the first sentence, the list of private roads and sections of roads in the town of Hopkinton can be found on the town's official street map, road, street map, which can be found at the town hall or on the town website.
So what I'm suggesting
Are you saying you're not going to put the list on?
Right, so instead of putting the list in the ordinance, because the list is going to change constantly, take the list out and make that part of the official map. Do you know how we list, we list all the state roads and all the other kinds of roads? We can add that list of
But this is the map ordinance.
Right, but we're not, we're not putting specifics in there. We're, we're just stating that.
You don't have to rewrite the ordinance every time someone adds a road.
So we take out the whole list.
Okay, so what, so read it again.
Yeah, we're going to have to say that again.
Yes, one more time.
You'll have it memorized by now.
Sorry, I can't, I can't write in writing.
No, I can't either.
If you would repeat what you've said, I will write it down.
The list of roadways recognized as non-town maintained private roadways in the town of Hopkinton shall be maintained along with the official town map or as part of
Shall be found on the official town Hopkinton street map.
That sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we could make a mission, make a motion with the, the amendment.
Do you want me to make it? I make a motion that we accept Division Five official street map with the following amendment on section 17-147. The list of roadways recognized as non-town maintained private roadways in the town of Hopkinton shall be found on the official town street map and located at the town hall or at, or on the town website.
Okay, sounds good. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Is there, all in favor? Is there any discussion? Nope, all in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Here I.
And Moffett, I. The motion passes. Thank you. All right, up next, under unfinished business, number two, discuss, in, discuss, consider and vote to adopt an additional mutual aid resolution and authorize the Hopkinton Police Chief to enter in an additional nonreciprocal, non-emergency aid agreement between the town of Hopkinton and the University of Rhode Island.
These, this is basically the same as what you've done before between Hopkinton, Charleston, Richmond and West Philly. You may ask, why are we doing it with URI? And there's one simple answer to that. And that's because for approximately two decades, Hopkinton and many other municipalities are going over there to assist on their commencement, graduation. And that's again, May 22nd. Whenever we've gone to the Police Chiefs Association, that's always been a topic that possibly we should have a mutual aid between all the departments that assist. Obviously, URI cannot handle that by themselves. And there's approximately, maybe seven or eight different municipalities goes over there and helps. It was also, came to light, they had a possible active shooter over there approximately two and a half years ago. And all units were headed that way. And we thought that would be, this would resolve a lot of issues that you might have. Many of the departments that they're doing this with also coming from court, fourth district court, travel by or through URI. So we thought this would be a good answer for that. So it's not, it's not used as often as the municipalities that surround Hopkinton. But I think there's a true need for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just concerned, I'm a URI man, but I was just concerned about what are we doing over to URI? And what does Hopkins get out of it as far as if we send somebody over there, does the URI police do anything for Hopkins other than we might have students over there? That was the only thing that went through my mind.
Well, at times URI do, they do host law enforcement activities over there. So they have the special Olympics over there as such as well. And I think that's great for the community. So I think
But they don't come to Hopkins and do anything.
No, so 90% of the, the mutual aid would be us providing them with, with mutual aid, not vice versa. But in the event that they were ever in Hopkinton, then they have the mutual aid to fall back on.
Well, that's true, like you said, you are traveling by there to go to the courthouse to recall. You are there. If you're having a mutual aid agreement, I mean, something weren't, you needed their assistance.
Correct. Correct. There's no plans to take this on for every, every department.
You're not going to Coventry, because it's not, or North Smithfield or whatever. If it's in your path and direction doing your service, I mean,
There's a, there's
At least beyond that. Yeah, I mean, I
There's a true need, even if it's only on that one particular day.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'll vote for it. In fact, I make a motion that we adopt the mutual aid resolution and authorize the Hopkins Police Chief to enter in an additional nonreciprocal, non-emergency aid agreement between the town of Hopkinton and the University of Rhode Island.
My second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Davis, I.
Marvel, I.
Here I.
And Moffett, I. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up next, we have the second public forum. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, just say your name for the record. And if there's anyone attending online, just raise your hand. See anyone, their hand raised, and there's only two attendees, just so everyone knows. Of people. So if I don't see anybody wanting to say anything, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr., okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I move, Council Hurst, I move we adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I. Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
Moffett, aye, motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.